But it wasn't working.
All right, everybody ready? We'll get started. Um, this is the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, October tenth. This meeting is being recorded. It's being offered in a hybrid format. Um, and we'll do, uh, I guess a roll call attendance. Malcolm?
Here.
Uh.
Jackie.
Jackie. Here.
I am here.
Pedro.
Yeah.
Randy here. Okay, great. Um, we'll go ahead and we'll get started with the first item on our agenda, which is a Form A for thirty-five Silver Street.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, um. I'm Sal from. So what we're doing is. It's a non-accepted building lot. It's a small piece of property. It's actually a swamp that the neighbor would like to own. From the, um, so cutting it off to the property of, um. A Blackwater Reliquy, and it's a, it's lot one A on the plan. It's a. Zero point three five six acre parcel, non-accepted building lot, and encompasses a swamp, and will be conveyed to, uh, John Van Wagner. Who's a butter to the east. The remaining lot will have sufficient area frontage to maintain, um, meat-salmoning appointments. And we ask that you endorse it as a approval not required parcel division.
Just to clarify for the record, the, uh, a butter is to the west, right?
What did I say? East? I'm sorry.
The parcel that.
It's to the west.
Okay, great. All right.
Uh, move to endorse.
We have a motion to endorse. Hey Jonathan, do we have a second?
I do.
Second by Malcolm. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. You are welcome. Uh, we'll sign in the right place.
Makes two over there.
More complicated than it used to be.
It's a communal activity.
But I like the spirit of sharing. All right, are we okay to multitask?
Yes.
We'll, um, move on to the next item on our agenda, which, uh, is a full nomination that currently exists, we have a motion to approve as amended.
And amended.
And amended?
Yes.
Well, I only got one amendment.
Too small.
Oh, okay, amended and amended.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Do you have a second? Second by Malcolm. Any further discussion on the amendments? All in favor? I have plenty of votes. All right, thank you very much. Um, next item on our agenda is, um, continuation of our discussion on the master plan. Um, this last, uh, review of the existing master plan are for the sections on transportation, services and facilities and implementation. Um, and I think we can get started there again, just sort of keeping with the approach we've been taking towards. Want to move through each section, so transportation, page fifty-four. And as we did the last time around, um, we wanted to try and, um, identify kind of at a high level, um. Additional information that's entered our community since this was put together that we want to make sure gets incorporated into the new plan. Um, and then if anyone's got any, um, observations or comments about. Goals or, or, um, actionable items out of these sections that, you know, are accomplished or are still significant and need to stay in. Um, let's, let's capture those.
Where's, where's Tate? We need him.
Where's Tate? I was thinking about it, I might just send it to him. Uh, so, transportation, so it's fairly broad in terms of what it's covering, so kind of all modes of transportation. Including vehicular and roads, including traffic safety. Um, public transit bridges, which I think is probably raised, uh.
It's a little behind the times.
In, well, you know, I was thinking it's some of it, some of it has been accomplished, right? But there's still more.
They left out some bridges.
Right, right.
Probably the only item that's regressed in the entire master plan.
Yeah, I think infrastructure just gets older, right? I'd be curious what this group thought about the parking section and whether or not you think it's still, um. Very reflective of what the existing. Community has experienced, both in Husetonic and in Great Barrington, from a parking and parking access. It. Seems like that's still something we hear about, and.
I see there's a downtown parking task force. What, what happened to that?
I don't know what happened to that.
Is it still around?
No, it's not.
Yeah. They issued a report. I have it if you want to.
Yeah.
Go over it.
Yeah, that's a good, a good suggestion. They did issue a report.
Yeah.
When did they do that? When was the report written? Do you know, Pedro?
No, I don't.
Could you share that with the group after the meeting?
Yeah. Um. The select board has brought up parking, uh, maybe the last strategic planning meeting, you know, recognizing that some. Situations have changed in the downtown. Some parking lots have been improved, the town lots.
And privatized.
Other parking lots are, um. Are changing use. For example, the old Searls School, uh, used to be public property and public parking, and now is not offered for that. Uh. Uh, parking lot across the street here, the old BCC is developed and you will come online. So there's some things that are, uh, changing, uh. Last, last time.
He used to be able to park in Foster's.
Yeah, that's right.
That was privatized. Wheel and chain.
Well, it was always private.
Yeah, yeah, but they were open to it.
Yeah, but let's be clear, it's always private, but it was open and unenforced.
Can you remind us what is happening with the Husetonic School redevelopment and the parking arrangement there? Are they having shared parking with the Husieville?
Uh, I'd have to go back to the site plan.
Okay.
There's not a lot of parking there anyway.
At the school?
Yeah.
But there's a lot of activity there and.
No, I understand.
Yeah, the.
It's not going to solve.
Parking that was required to meet the eight units other than redeveloped building were all onsite. I think they had more than eight onsite, so there may be some sharing.
Yeah.
I have to look at the site plan to make sure.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with the Husetonic Improvement Task Force about, um. Some of their, you know, if they've thought about parking in terms of the work they're doing. Um.
I'll continue to stress, even says it in the master plan, we have more than a thousand spots of parking in town, but that only about two hundred of them are public. So. I continue to stress that it moves the town to negotiate some agreement with. Private property owners whose lots are empty. Pretty much all the time. To help with parking in towns, particularly in the downtown. I was thinking that they, that they could, on those properties, they could give some sort of an abasement, abatement. Of, of a small amount of the taxes because you're only, most of the building, the building is the, is the. The true cost of the taxes, but.
Right.
The land is still taxed.
Mm-hmm.
And we could reduce that if they were open to public parking after hours and weekends and so.
Right. Yep, that might be a solution, something to discuss.
What, and Chris, I probably asked you this in the past, if the town didn't take Colleton's lot. Here by eminent domain, could that, would that do away with the deed restriction?
Could you, I, I'm not sure I understand that.
Okay, Dale Colleton's lot here.
Uh-huh.
Um, not the, not the train station, but north of the train station.
Uh-huh.
Uh, there's a deed restriction on it that was replaced there by Dale to, to get the, the, I forget their names.
I, I recall. I don't think that restriction exists anymore. I think it was withdrawn.
It what?
Yeah, I think it was removed, so. Or they?
How can you remove it?
Uh, by mutual agreement of the parties.
Oh, really?
Okay, you know that, that lot has one.
Yeah, a little bit. It's all the way, all the way north.
Um. We don't want to get into the weeds on that particular lot, but I think just, I like your point, Pedro, that there's a lot of parking and we have. Some opportunity for sharing potentially and also perception if you need to manage.
Also, I'm thinking about signage.
Yeah.
And how on earth do you put the signage out? It's gonna be a little here and a little here and maybe a couple here, but it's not really helpful.
Um. At the last meeting, we also talked about walkability, complete streets and cycling and e-bikes as potential issues we wanted to focus on in the transportation section. Um, I think.
The town was in the process of, I've seen two signs go up in the last couple of days in my, my neighborhood. That is basically saying, give four feet, motorists give four feet to, and then it shows the bicyclist.
Mm-hmm.
Diagram of bicyclist. I think they should add a pedestrian next to it.
Yeah, that's a good point, especially there's a lot of walking on the streets around where you are.
Yeah. I think the state law actually requires four feet for bicycles. I don't know if they have.
Yeah, it's a state, yeah, we're following state law.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a specification for pedestrians. Don't hit them.
I'm gonna assign it with the bike and somebody walking.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, there's a lot in the transportation section on sidewalks, and I think we've made a fair amount of progress on sidewalks in town and connecting.
Not always.
I, there, there is an instance where we've gone backwards. Yes, but as a whole, I think we're net ahead on sidewalks.
Well, there's Main Street and, and Husetonic and West Avenue, I, I guess are the, the big ones, probably.
But there's also distinction between sidewalks, because there's some sidewalks with lovely. Curves and then other sidewalks that are macadam or asphalt. And did it, what, I don't understand the distinction between one versus the other. Is it because of the amount of traffic?
It's cheaper.
Oh, I know one's cheaper, but I'm just wondering what this decision-making process is.
Where have, where?
Husetonic. Main Street is, is, is asphalt.
Main Street is all asphalt?
And Ross, Rossiter too.
Rossiter, oh, Rossiter's just striking on, on the pavement, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, well, there, that was easy.
Yeah. I didn't think there was a sidewalk there.
Yeah.
There's one below street grid.
Oh, and it was just paved over to make it a uniform surface?
Yeah, there was some drainage.
Okay. Um, so work to be done still on sidewalks, I think. Um, traffic safety, I was curious if we had a lot of data now from some of those feedback signs, but.
There was, there was data. I don't, I don't know if I should say it's a lot of data, but we do have data.
Because I think we get feedback that people are concerned about speeds in certain areas where.
Right.
Maybe the roads are, I can think of, um, uh, Northlane Road and Christian Hill and. I think we're collecting data on Northlane for sure. I don't know about Christian Hill though.
Yeah, I'm not sure which signs are collecting data or not. I, I think that. The, the. Those radar, those speed feedback signs are very good for one time, sort of making people slow down, um, but. If a lot of times, once people get past this line, you speed up again.
Yes, I live near Taconic Street and where people accelerate because they're worried they can't get up the hill.
Yeah, I think it has to do a lot with the street design. If it's a wide street, uh, it's straight street, you're probably going to go fast, it'll do it.
Transit, we would want to add the information on the microtransit. I don't know, is, is Tate still, uh, accessible to us in terms of providing some input on that?
Um.
If he's not in an official capacity with the town as an intern or anything right now?
Tate is our microtransit program director.
Okay.
Through, through the planning department. So whatever, whatever information we would, that I have.
Sure.
Microtransit does about two thousand rides a month.
That's amazing.
It's pretty incredible. It focuses on seniors and medical rides, uh, and they make up the majority of the rides, but there's a substantial amount of the rides that are for. Um, people going to work or getting home from work.
Is it at capacity? Is it at capacity? Is it, is it comfortable at its size right now?
If, the capacity really depends on the number of vehicles and the amount of staff we have to drive the vehicles. So it's kind of a moving target. Two thousand is a really great number. I think anything more than that, you have to hire additional vehicles.
Yeah.
And get additional vehicles, which is, which is difficult.
And is there a percentage that's actually paid for by the fairs or, I assume the town's putting money into it?
Fairs are very low. They're two dollars.
They're two dollars or something, right?
It's mostly grant funded through state and federal grants.
Oh, so is that, that's gonna go away?
Funds, uh, a portion of it, maybe up to, I'll have the percentage wrong, but the grants are usually fifty-fifty grants. Um, the town, Great Barrington pays some, plus our partner towns also pay some, plus we have partners, uh, businesses who are also contributing to the program.
So that, that's great.
So that fifty percent local share is not just the town, Great Barrington, it's spread out.
It's amazing. It really is. I mean, we have a number of people that use it.
Yeah.
To and from work.
Speak up, so Kim can hear.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. We have a number of people that use it to get to and from work and it's. Yeah, it's.
I have not used it myself.
It's very easy.
I know a driver. I get a lot of feedback with a driver. Just how, um. How it helps people who otherwise don't have access to transportation get to the store for groceries or.
The other thing we have, I mean, it's out in front many times a day.
For shoppers. Am I getting confused? Did West Stockbridge actually buy a van or a truck for this project in order to participate?
West Stockbridge did purchase a van and we do use that van as part of the program.
Yeah, which I thought was pretty cool.
Yeah, Stockbridge also provides that.
It's a good example of the regionalization discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago.
So none of the vehicles are private though? Is that right?
Correct, they're not private. Uh, one vehicle was donated, two vehicles were donated. Uh, and one was acquired with state grant or acquiring, uh, electrical vehicle, state grant, electric vehicle.
Um, I was curious if in reading transportation, um, thinking that the last time we talked about kind of an overarching, like, resiliency. Theme to try and drive through an updated plan, did anything come to people's minds in terms of. How we can emphasize resiliency through the transportation outside of providing more multi, you know, non-motorized transportation access? Yeah, we can identify where they are, right?
You said charging station?
Yeah.
Uh.
I mean, that does come up, but especially with people that are visiting town.
Where are charging stations?
Yeah.
Chargers.
Yeah, charges.
Oh, and then passenger train service. Have that left the station?
Never arrived.
There was no warning. Out of the train.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that that's.
I think the Berkshire Florida was supposed to help prove the concept, but, um. Malcolm, there was some talk at BRC about having a local commuter. That would go down Sheffield and go up to Pittsfield. Heard anything? Well, somebody raised it as, as a nice to have, but I, I don't know that there's any serious proposal for anything like that. Um, I remember that came up better, yeah, than me. So I think somebody asked about whether it would be an idea that.
Um, wh- while it. It seems unlikely, or I, I haven't heard anything about re-establishment of passenger rail on the Husetonic line. Um. It's worth noting that the railroad still serves an important function for transporting goods within the county, minerals.
And maybe PCBs.
Uh, you know, heavy materials, et cetera. It is important. Maybe not necessarily for, uh, Great Barrington's working base, but it is for the county, uh, and adjacent areas, so it. So I'm still talking about it as part of the transportation network.
So as part of the transportation network, I mean, I just remember when you were here, I think the last time or one of the times you were talking about dumping of things by the railroad along. That road in Husetonic.
Yeah.
And, and Dusenville Road, and so is that something that we should be attending to in this area or stipulation, stipulate that the trains that they're passing through and using are. Rails, et cetera, but I know it's the whole right-of-way issue here, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think it warrants trying to understand a little bit better, um, how the rights of way are managed and that the land use and the right-of-way is consistent with the. Land use in the surrounding area.
Yeah.
Uh. I, I'd love to hear if you've heard any more, Michelle.
Just, it, it's still a topic of conversation, but what concerns me the most is number one, the debris came from a, another local community. Was dumped in my residential neighborhood. Number two, we talk about transporting PCBs by rail. So if we can't rectify this situation up on Vandusville Road, does that mean there's going to be PCB staging areas? Along the rail line. If they can do one thing, they can do another thing. Um, the thing is, if. Uh, one has to do is walk down Vandusville Road and see the abuses that are going on on that road. This is just another one. So that's a higher level fear, because there is obviously common sense would dictate, well gee, you know, you go by train, you're reducing the truck. Volume, et cetera, et cetera. Doesn't help the residential neighborhoods along the tracks. And keep in mind, the railroad has rights of way down here too. You would not see that debris. Right here. You would not. So why is it dumped in my neighborhood? And no other local town should dump their junk in our neighborhood. I wouldn't think of doing it to another town. So, um, there's a lot of concerns there.
Do we know the town?
Well.
I mean, if we're gonna have a discussion.
As a matter of fact, in the select board meeting Monday night, I brought it up again, and our select board member sat there tight-lipped. Which leads me to be more suspicious than anything, but again, it's my personal feelings. Um, Mr. Stanton had a citizen meeting at his home on Sunday, it came up for discussion on Sunday. So there is concern about it, especially in its, again, if they're doing this now, what are they going to do with the PCB removal? It can escalate.
So is, are the, is the train, are they dumping stuff in the train to stage it there for later removal?
No, but this was, um.
Construction material.
I think I brought it to the attention of the select board. Um. There was an enforcement order in Stockbridge for Husetonic Railroad to remove debris up there. About the same time, who's control trucking started dumping debris down in. Our neighborhood. I've been trying to find out information from Patrick White, Jamie Manassi, uh, other people, what happened with that enforcement order up in Stockbridge. I even did a public records request. Stockbridge has been tight-lipped. I asked our select board to put it on an agenda. They've been tight-lipped. They refused to put it on an agenda, and they won't tell me why. So, again, it's, it's just, this is, is this the start of worse things to come in my neighborhood? That, that's my concern.
Yeah.
And I have improved. I just wanted, I have improved that it is Stockbridge's debris. But Patrick White suggested I put an air tag on debris up in Stockbridge to find out. And my husband's sitting there, he's not listening at all, and we went. Seriously? Uh, and no, we're not doing that. Just like I said, it's dishonesty. And that's it, and which has gone by the wayside in a lot of things.
So you're supposed to sneak into the debris in Stockbridge and put an air tag in there so that we can.
In my younger days, I probably. Thank you for the support. So like I said, I just want to know, number one, did it come from Stockbridge? Number two, is it allowed, even if it didn't, why is it being allowed to be dumped in my neighborhood? Number three, why is our select board being non-responsive regarding the consideration?
I guess is there a plan to get rid of? There are plans.
That's exactly it, Fred. If we had it on an agenda with the select board, we could say, hey, is there a plan?
Uh, I, I don't want to take up the whole meeting with this. Um, you and I have spoken about it, and I think from a land use standpoint, we want to understand it, um. Uh, you know, my own experience with the railroads is that they're, you know, they're not subject to local zoning and so, um. They have different latitude. I don't know what the mechanism is.
Oh, we're talking railroad, and this is their conduct in a residential neighborhood?
Railroad, it's notorious. Yeah, no, unfortunately, they are, and I, again, I think it's, it's why we want to understand kind of. Um, maybe more clearly in our, in what our, uh, abilities are to set parameters.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right. Is there anything else in transportation that jumped out at anyone as like a big area that we need to think about moving forward?
The only thing that jumped out is that most of the stuff is either done or it hasn't started. And, uh, so there's still a lot of meat here, and it has to do with the largest metal passenger. Still the safe streets, resiliency, the parking, the cars, the, yeah.
And that, it may always be that way, right?
Yeah, and we'll have to keep working on it.
Okay. Anybody else on transportation? What was that?
No, I just said sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
I mean. I don't know. I think sidewalks are going to become more important as time goes on, um. I don't think it's just because I'm getting older and not as good as a driver as I used to be, but. I feel like it, it's getting less safe walking on the roads, um, in the residential areas. It's really nice. Parts are going slow. You know, but once you get out to some of the main arteries, it's, you know, if there's not a sidewalk, I mean.
Right.
I'm like scanning the whole time.
People are distracted and driving faster.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's all valid.
And.
Stock and Road, well, I mean, you should be able to take.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
As far as the road, you can get to some.
Get to the, the town.
It's only like real side streets. There's all these like sub arteries.
So we'll need updated mapping, um, that shows what infrastructure we have now. It'd be nice to sort of see that.
Yeah.
Because I do think there's been some progress, but I agree with Malcolm that it's ongoing.
And it is a, you know, I mean, as a non, not only for just like recreation, people walking, but people going somewhere, using those transportations.
It's really odd when you go to the DuBois home site on twenty-three, it's just. You're there at what, at the official entrance and you walk around because it's a house between you and where the home site is. But then you think, can I get back to my car? And you can't dare walk on that road. So I, I mean, the neighbor's not happy that the home site's there anyway, but, um. It's just, that's, you can't put, can you put park, um, sidewalks on a state road?
Oh, absolutely. Um, but I, I think usually a sidewalk is. Decided upon when the volume of traffic warrants it, or there's some like, you know. Drive that's driving some sort of pedestrian movement there.
It's just, it's just a peculiar situation.
Yeah. Um, I mean, an example is as you go down Route seven, right? There's sidewalks at least to a point down to the senior center. And that's.
But in traffic calming, the. But in traffic calming, the best way to tra- uh, calm traffic is what South Agamont has done, and I've heard um what Monterey's doing. Um, just pulling people over and writing tickets. Like, uh, my mom goes through Monterey to come into town, and I I guess there's a couple of new officers there that have been pulling everyone over, and she got pulled over. And she said that um when you would go the speed limit before, you'd have someone write on your, another car right on your tail. And now she's noticed since they've started stopping people that there's a big gap.
Hmm, yeah.
So.
Enforcement does help, that's true.
I mean.
Okay. All right, so we go to services and facilities?
We can control it on state roads.
Claudia Shapiro, Seven Agamont Plain Road. For the board moves off of transportation. I'm asking about the collage of Great Barrington Regional, the K G P R that's been inside the master plan since two thousand thirteen. It was actually permitted in twenty twenty-three, but hasn't done anything with the permit yet. Apparently, it's going to be located off the Seaton Crossroads.
We don't have, I I think in appendix, I'm not sure what your question is, Claudia, but.
I'm questioning, what's the intent for a collage to Great Barrington Regional Airport?
I'm not aware that there is any intent for regional airport. Um.
But it's in the master plan, right?
The master plan. Uh, I was looking at it actually this morning. The master plan does indicate that there is an airport. It does not call it a regional airport. Um, it acknowledges the runway length. Uh, and I imagine that this paragraph would need to be revised to reflect the current status of the airport.
Um, well, now that you mentioned the runway length. It says that the runway is over twenty-five hundred feet. The runway is actually two thousand four hundred and seventy-nine feet. I'm concerned that that is taking part of my property as the owner of the end of the runway. I know I got up before this board at one point and stated for the record that my property, I was the owner of the end of the runway, and the minutes said that I got up and stated for the record, my property starts twenty feet from the end of the runway. That is not true. So what the, it actually says is the G B R, okay, airport, the Walter J Collage at Great Barrington Airport, G B R. That stands for Great Barrington Regional, Brandy Nelson, elevation seven hundred and thirty-nine feet on Agamont Plain Road, has been serving the Southern Burgess since the nineteen twenties. The airport runway is over twenty-five hundred feet in length. The airport is operated by Berkshire Aviation Enterprise, provides sales, service, flight instruction, counter flights, and sightseeing tours. It's an important, though often undermarked, aspect of our economy. Tourists, business people, and emergency services all use the airport. This was all pretty much true until February of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the airport's located in the Water Quality Protection District upstream of the Green River Water Supply Galleries. And it's in a residential agricultural area. Any growth activity or development here must be regulated to protect the town's water supply and to ensure uses are compatible with residential and agricultural agricultural neighbors. So I'm asking the board as a planning board, hey, what would be your vision for regional airport? And what's going to be happening with the airport, specifically my neighborhood, the land of others, my property?
Yeah, so we as a policy do not have a vision for the airport. It is privately owned. Um, and as applications come before this board and the select board, any proposal at that airport would be evaluated on its individual merits um in the context of our public meeting structure. So um, at this point, I appreciate you making some commentary about some um possible inaccuracies in the old master plan and updating the master plan to reflect the current status is something that will take up as part of the master plan update.
Well, I really feel like it's privately owned, Brandy, and I do know that the Berkshire.
It is a private property. It is not a public property. So I'm not going to get into a debate about ownership. I am not.
The town of Great Barrington, according to the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, is the host to the K G P R?
It is a privately owned piece of property. It's not.
That's debatable. Uh, the master.
It is not debatable.
The master, that's your opinion, Brandy. The master plan also has the airport property as mixed use when it's residential. It has the entire property in a chapter sixty-one A, which gives the town first right refusal. I know when they got permitted, Mr. Rembold, you were supposed to cut, they were supposed to give you a plot plan showing exactly how much property is in the chapter sixty-one A. I never asked you for it because you never responded truthfully to any of my questions or any of my reference requests.
Claudia.
No, I'm a citizen, Brandy, as a fellow tax man.
This is not, this is not the proper venue for this. This is, I appreciate, I, excuse me. I appreciate that you have concerns and you are able to raise them. This is neither a public session. We have been very generous in taking your comments. We are open to hearing your specific concerns, but I am not going to get into debate at this meeting at this time about the airport. Okay?
You just addressed what Michelle Hubert Hubert said.
And we give it, but you're getting to the point where we're not going to be able to answer your questions. You have.
I'm not, you know what, Brandy, I'm not asking for answers, and I'm making comments that come out of your master plan. And my last comment is is that the airport property in the master plan shows it as all buildable. That's not right, okay? All buildable in our aquifer? Thank you.
Okay. Claudia, if you don't like it, you can leave the meeting.
That's okay. I'm here because I'm here, and I'm going to continue to follow you, Brandy.
Then you'll abide by the rules that everybody else has to abide by, and you'll be respectful of everyone. Okay? We're not going to take up argument for the meeting. All right. So services and facilities, I think Malcolm, similar to what you had raised before, there is kind of a fifty fifty on this, right?
Yeah, I mean, um, one of the things that struck me, uh, the goal SF two with the fiscal reading by increasing partnerships to cooperate. I couldn't find any of those in the action items.
Yeah, I was curious. Do you remember, Chris, what the genesis of that was?
Because I was looking for what the status was in these things, and I couldn't find any of the items associated. Maybe I just wasn't searching.
Chris, can you send us all copies of the South County Resource List? That's cited in here. I have no idea what that is.
Where did you see that?
It's under uh SF two point four.
Plus, to be updated twice yearly?
It's it exists on the town's website. I'm just trying to answer. I see some. Yes, I see S Fs, but not S F twos.
Well, maybe it's one that needs to be evaluated um in discussion with the select board. In terms of new services, are there any new services that we're offering aside a microtransit that we already covered, but?
Sure, microtransit.
I couldn't think of anything else. It seems like we've made progress on redundant town buildings.
Yeah, just about everything, except for SF two. I mean, the rest of them are done, except for the other ones, the SF five point three.
Yeah.
Still waiting.
And that's in progress, right?
Bridges don't fall under facilities.
Um, bridges fall under transportation. Yeah.
All the bridges.
Right.
They fall in the river.
One um, one facilities thing that I I'd love to um get updated mapping on, unless, you know, it hasn't changed, was the um sewer and water. Um, that map, I know we talked.
Have an updated map, which.
We do. Oh, you have?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I must be unsure.
But yes, it exists.
And the town buildings list has to be updated, too. Obviously. And we've, we've expanded it and some, we've gotten rid of some, but we've taken on another ones, right? Reed cleaners?
Oh, I got some.
Hopefully, it's not a long-term. And it's, it's not, it's not a, it's it's not a building that, it's a building we own. It's not a building we can operate at this time. So I guess I I would consider it as facility to be uh uh maintained or from which services would be offered.
And what, what about the old deli site now? Is the town still on that?
Uh, it's in Land Court, yeah.
Big. Why is it in Land Court?
The town's foreclosing.
Oh, it is, okay.
I think the partnerships with SF two is. And there's probably myriad examples of it.
Oh, I think a lot of this stuff has been done, you know, partnerships, or fifty, you know, nonprofits, Lake Finance Field, or taking care of Riverwalk, or donations to the canine unit, or uh, the library. There's a lot of services that are ended by or part by donation or um with local service providers.
And I actually thought that um appendix or, excuse me, um, volume two section on services was more, have more specificity. Yeah, um. And it does talk about goals for, you know, regional services that I think we've done through some of the municipal aggregation and other sharing arrangements. Um. But, yeah, so all of that will need to be updated. And then there was a whole section on government and government services. And so I think in terms of are there other boards and commissions that need to be included in that volume two that were not originally included?
You're you're moaning, you're saying yes?
Oh, I was just sort of acknowledging the comment.
And probably just in terms of um also discussing regionalization, like the new arrangement with the building department, right? That's now a shared service.
And we should probably put an ambulance service in there.
That's a good one, too. Yeah, I actually, I made a note that I didn't see EMS. But I guess police and, oh, police and emergency management is a little bit different, right?
I'm pretty sure EMS is discussed. Obviously, the two largest sort of existential items that are facing town are in services and facilities, and that's the school and the St. L'Arce system. So.
Mm-hmm.
That'll probably dominate any conversation, as I'm sure.
You're you're leaving out the bridges.
It's. It'll dominate the conversation.
It's all one conversation.
In terms of infrastructure? Is that how you see it?
The challenge for the town.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, I mean, I did see who's a tonic waterworks was in here. It probably deserves a higher uh. Um.
That's morphed in the last eleven years.
Yeah, but even here, it acknowledges that it's, you know, underinvested and it's got some challenges, so. At at that point, they were saying that, so. But I agree, it has more. Um, all right, anything else on facilities? We've been taking on more facilities or services, so. Oh, the other thing I had a note on was the discussion around the school and mentioning that in school district consolidation effort that was gone through to evaluate whether or not there should be more regionalization in terms of the schools.
Doesn't seem like both the thing.
Yeah, in terms of the towns.
No, I mean, I think just to say that in the last, in terms of an update, that it was evaluated just for the record.
Good, and voted down.
And voted down.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on facilities? Um, I didn't look at the implementation section, other than very briefly. I was unsure, Chris, if you had any commentary about the approach that's outlined in the master plan, and if that's pretty typical and suggests that we look at it on a regular basis and update it, and that it's basically good for tenured.
Well, the the board receives an update when we're in session, so in terms of work, the stacks of tasks um when we're last last month. I I think it's reasonable to respect uh annual or semi-annual.
I I was thinking just in general in terms of a updated master plan, that the implementation strategy outlined here is probably what we want to continue moving forward, but maybe more actively.
I was looking at the one from the previous master plan, and you would this a really interesting outline of what was done, accomplished and not. And some of the language is very similar to what we experienced and.
In the ninety-seven?
No, it's just, it was interesting. I think it's a useful tool to see what's going on back then, and then it's kind of a very snapshot view of the panel. And what's happening and what's still on the table.
Did you have any big takeaways?
Oh, I highlighted a few things, but I'm not, I that I'd like to bring up and talk about another time.
Okay.
And also, should we talk about the the improvements to the town? All site?
In the master plan? In terms of the structure of the implementation, chapter, Brandy, I mean, the the thought process of a master plan update may come up with a better way to structure that.
Mm-hmm.
Use a friendly way. I think the attempt by the committee in twenty thirteen was to lay out things that just made sense to do, that we just absolutely should do, the kind of no brainers. And then to think about how to achieve stepping stones to the larger uh vision, the kind of building blocks. Stepping stones towards achieving very large or very expensive items. And I think that's the way the committee thought about that implementation. There may be better and more included ways, user-friendly ways.
There's a better way to implement the implementation, because when we went back and talked to a lot of the organizations, they weren't aware that they were even in the master plan. By the time these committees had changed personnel, the information hadn't been passed on. And so there was like some instances where people were really, wow, we're supposed to do that? That's really interesting. I wish we had known, but but it was there and you're surprised to see it. So there's just the frequency of contact and follow.
There's that. I think there's also a challenge in like turnover in some boards and committees, right? And so how do you keep that thread of continuity going?
Well, I think we, I mean, maybe a change this time is that we need to stay on top of it.
I agree with you. Yeah, definitely lesson learned.
It was like the select board and planning board kept talking about it, but it's never went, yeah, never, never got.
Because I'm curious about how certain things got in there, identified as that's what they're supposed to be doing. And was that in discussion with the organ, with the committee? But they, the people that you're talking with left and didn't pass it on, or that that's not something that keeps getting raised? How do we relate to what's supposed to be happening in the master plan?
Yeah, I think lots of us are like shiny pennies, right? We see a shiny penny, and that's the thing we're focused on. And then like, you have other things that come up and they distract you, and you forgot about that. Shiny penny. Right, or age. You already proved the demographics there. I was curious, Chris, in terms of the last master plan effort, did did this costing exercise of like dollar signs, was that, was that done as part of the master plan? Like, there was some very high level kind of, there was a magnitude costing?
It wasn't anything. You know.
Formal.
Formal or scientific.
I don't think we ever talked about it, did we?
No, it was. I think uh.
Chris did it.
Chris is vague.
Yeah, I I think it was just a kind of common sense.
Yeah. Okay. Before we say we've done a high-level review of the current master plan and its current relevancy, is there, are there any other like items that you guys?
Well, we haven't talked about part two.
I guess I've been going like with them concurrently.
Just, I mean, I'm I'm just wondering if there's any data that we didn't, I think we collected a lot of data in twenty thirteen.
I think.
I'm just wondering if all of David, but I'm wondering if there's some data that we could go after that we didn't last time. I'm not sure what it is. I'm just saying that theoretically.
I think, you know, I mean, we already had talked about demographics, so that's where we had the start of our conversation. Um. I think there's probably data. I think there's probably data on buildings and operating costs, um, changes in zoning, or changing the land use cover, I was. Just asking Chris, just in terms of how we move forward. You know, I think all the mapping has to be updated, because there's been a lot of evolution of land conservation, land button conservation, land that's been developed, changes in zoning. Um, you know. Changes in trails, right?
The B, BRP C does all that for us?
I think we have to hire them, right?
They, they have, yeah, yeah, they have in the past, and they worked with us when we built this master twenty thirteen plan.
Yeah, it's much, Mark Malloy is still there?
Yeah, their, their data and mapping services are. Excellent.
I hit, you know, I just, I keep discovering things in the master plans that I haven't seen, and um, one of them was the, the vision maps. That are right up at the top, like page six and nine, and they're. They're on land use, development, conservation areas, and then open spaces and recreation, and that's almost, I mean, I like visualization and being able to look at a map and see. And it's very detailed as to what they'd expect to see in those different areas, and I just thought that was a.
Where did you get this?
On page six to nine in the master plan.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And that was just an interesting exercise.
Yeah, I think when we get into public engagement, that. That's the sort of thing.
I think it's a tool, it's a really interesting.
Yeah, you wanna have that kind of conversation with people. I mean, my personal feeling is that it needs to be underpinned a little bit in the existing characteristics, right? Like, we don't want people building in floodplains or resource areas. I think we do want people building where there's infrastructure, so that we can see the vision of walking, and we can get people connected to see our water, so. Probably wanna frame it, but I, I think in general, the. Pattern is kind of reflecting where the built environment is, both in the zonic and the grid. Yeah. Well, there'll be a lot we need to do in terms of um, developing an engagement strategy and, and moving forward there, um.
It's not harder to come up with a strategy, it's doing it.
It's implementing it, yeah. So I, I think Jackie, you and I were having a conversation about um, public engagement, and maybe in the next couple of weeks, we can sit down with Chris and.
We should put some dates on it so we could hold ourselves, I, I can hold myself to it.
Right, definitely, and I think that would be a near term goal, so maybe by our November meeting. Jackie and I can meet with you beforehand, Chris?
Yeah, keep in mind we're not meeting.
On the twenty four, right.
So I don't know if you wanna meet again as a board, but.
I think if we could, I'd like to come up with like a very high level outline, like. And run tasks and, and just so we have something to guide ourselves against and be able to communicate.
Also, I've been really keen to talk to some of the people like Jonathan, et cetera, who are actually on the committee.
Yeah.
And what worked and what didn't, based on what was done, and this is with you, Chris, it's like, what worked the last time and what didn't quite work? And it, how we could tweak it to make it more effective.
Do we wanna try and do that at that November meeting?
I think we should just try.
At the November.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I'd love it if we were responding to something like, here's a high level outline of schedule, and then get this group's input and maybe see.
And get it to people before the meeting, so you could chew on it a little bit, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, have it be with our information packets as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's.
Awesome, thanks, guys. Um, so in terms of zoning amendments. Pedro, do you want a lead discussion on possible zoning amendments for May twenty twenty five?
I think I was wanting to compare your agenda.
Pardon?
I was the one who put.
I thought possibly the two of you spoke, because it was, Pedro had emailed me, and then you asked for it, and I just sort of assumed we may have had a conversation with one another.
No, great minds.
I apologize for, I'm glad you both are thinking that way.
Well. Chris included some other zoning items in the. In our information packet for the meeting that included this cottage zoning, which. I won't speak to, somebody else wants to speak to that, that's fine. I prepared for you guys just a, a general update to the planning or residential development section. That we talked about. Updating. And I guess I would just, if you, if everybody had a chance to review it, I'd love to hear your thoughts on. Could we start with a discussion about what's wrong? Why do we have to change it?
I mean, I can give you my opinion.
I'm not sure that the, that it's. Should I start? I just say what I don't like about it is that it um, it, it's not specific enough. With regards to what our intentions are with it. Um, as we saw with the previous project. Plans and designs can come in that look a lot like. A subdivision, for example, or something that is not using uh. The land to its greatest potential. And that's worth it, so. There are also some requirements in here that I think are a little arbitrary, and maybe a little dated with regards to this board, particularly the. The lot size per unit that we eliminated pretty much everywhere else. That I think could be evaluated. And I'm, I'm also, you know, it's my opinion that we shouldn't really be promoting policies that promote single family. Construction, unless it's mixed as, as it is here, because if I think somebody wants to do a single payment project, they can go through subdivision. Bylaw and, or the open space recreation bylaw, I think single family dwellings just are. You know, there, there are poor use of land, in my opinion, I think you can, if you just take. One single family unit and turn it into a two family unit, you're putting more people in it per the size of the land that it takes. Now, it was interesting, I was looking at that cottage, um, some of the presentations that were given in the. The webinar that I think you attended, Jonathan?
I did too.
And I was looking at some of the. Some of the projects and comparing what, because the cottage just quickly, the cottage zoning that they were promoting was all single family. And it was cluster development, all single family, but a lot of the projects were on large parcels of land. Where the side, where if you did the calculation, some of the sizes per unit of land were in the twelve thousand square feet. Eighteen thousand square feet, so. That's the kind of thing that.
Which, just to clarify, you see that as more compatible to subdivision, not really achieving the objectives of the purge, is that?
Yeah, and not only, well, you know, yeah, to a degree, but my biggest concern here is that we have about twenty five hundred. What was it? Twenty five hundred acres of developable land left. Of that, about half of it is undevelopable, so it seems a little irresponsible to me. To allow the least dense. Construction on such a little land that we have left. Does that make sense? Um, yeah, it makes sense, I'm not sure I agree with it a hundred percent yet, but. I think too, you know, from, from my point of view, I mean, I, I, I think you guys all know that I've. I've long held the belief that. Single family uh, only zones, large lot zoning. Setbacks, all of these things that were arbitrarily created. At the turn of the twentieth century are all things that are not doing us any good, and they. They help preserve our open space, do they? Um, to a degree, if we did, if, if we, if that was our policy, and I've talked to this board about that before, then we should really preserve the open space. Force all residential development to be in areas that are closer knit, closer together, within town infrastructure on already developed land. I mean, if that was our policy, I'd be a hundred percent behind that. As it is now. But isn't that what we do with zoning, that's all we can do with zoning, we can't tell people where to build, but we can. Tell people if you're bu, building agriculture, you gotta have X number of acres to build on, if you wanna build a new town. You know.
I'm curious, Pedro, if you. Um, I know you're, you're, just your plan in mind, have you like run through a test case where you've sort of like. Worked through the pragmatism of the current code and found it to be lacking, or um. Is this more just a um, like a. A rhetorical exercise that you've been like, let's, I'm just wondering if anybody.
It just demonstrated that it was rarely lacking.
Um, in terms of.
Northline Road. Well, I, I don't, I don't get that, actually, I mean. I don't, I don't get that as a shortcoming of the purd, I get it as a shortcoming of the implementation. Well, the bylaw doesn't specify. That it has to be clustered, for instance. Okay. That's a shortcoming.
Not, and that is something we've discussed like here, right, is do we wanna flip this on a Ted and.
But it's also a single family homes, so.
There's probably buckets of issues we need to talk about, right, like. Single, what, what housing type? And then like the density of that housing, and then the where of that housing.
What's the goal here, though, the ultimate goal, to maximize the number of people living? On that remaining available space?
I think to create the opportunity to have. More density while preserving, I don't know, I mean, are we living in the preserving open space?
Yeah, absolutely.
While preserving.
Just to make the land. More valuable, but making it more efficient, in other words, if land can serve, if less land can serve more people, I think we all benefit. Because we can preserve more open space, you know, quicker, I think that more tight knit communities, where you have some buildings that are shared and some that are not. They, those tended to create more sense of community among the people that live in those areas. It's, you know, it's the same argument with the parking lot, like, building parking lots is probably the worst thing you can do for a town in sense. When you think about the value of land, because that land that is a parking lot that sits. Nine, you know, for. We talked about birds. Sure, I'm just making the example, the, the reason why thinking about the value of land is important. Because, for example, the parking lot sits empty. A large majority of the time, it's not making any money, it's not providing any business activity, it's not providing any housing. It's the same thing with, with land, when you, when you put a single family home on a, on a piece of property, you're. More or less gonna use about five thousand, three thousand, five thousand square feet of that land for one family. It's a, it's a common, you know, it's the way we've been developing our, our country for over a hundred years now, and. It just seems to me that if, that a rethink of it, or that a policy that doesn't support that kind of development, that supports something different. That's not going to uh, have a complete dependence on the car. That, and that builds more community, I mean, you know, hey, I always look at my neighborhood, you know. It's very suburban, and we all have two acres of land, and we rarely speak to each other. It's, it's, I don't think it's a great way for us to really build community to be separate, so the purd. Is the intention, you know, and I think. I, I mean, I wasn't around when it was put together, but I think the intention of it is to create these types of. Land uses, where you maximize the use of the land by putting people closer together to create small communities that are surrounded by open space. And I'm not sure that. With the language that is, is in the current code, that it really accomplishes that, because it's not.
We can prioritize that, we could decide as a board and go and say that that's what we really wanna do.
I mean, if that's what everybody else was interested in, I'm just talking about.
No, but I'm just saying is that, that would be what you'd like to see happen.
True.
Because then it's just not a purd, right? If it doesn't. Then it's a subdivision.
I know, I'm trying, okay, okay. Since, since I didn't realize that Jonathan independently of Pedro wanted to bring this up, but let's hear.
Well, I asked John, but he isn't very interested, so I just wanted to. I haven't seen what Pedro did. In reading through it and contemplating cottage housing at the same, the same time. Uh, it occurred to me that, first of all, the purge should not be a special permit. It should be an SPR and subdivision. Um, because it's, it's actually a development that we would like to promote, much more than single family housing. And so it shouldn't, there's no reason for it to be a subdivision. I mean, there's no reason for it to be a special permit.
Yeah.
And. Uh, the other thing, if we do redo this, I would like to put in there is that. Existing perks. That is perds that have been created. Uh, by a special permit can be altered. Uh, through the, a new process. Uh, which would allow, for instance, on Northline Road, we could potentially build a lot more housing there. And it's. Uh, clustering is a goal of the purge, but it's not a requirement, it should definitely be a requirement. And. I think that. Uh, the. And we should, if, if it's our preferred de, form of development, we shouldn't have a separation requirement between perks. Uh, I'd like to see everyone right next to each other. And I think that. Right now, we've been successful in building. Affordable housing or workforce housing uh, with multi families, and that's great, but I think. Most people would prefer. To live in a, in a cottage housing situation where they have their own house. And they have shared facilities. And. You know, they, they have an open space uh, that is shared with their neighbors, and they, they. Walk there, they walk from their car to their house, and they interact with their neighbors, and it builds community.
When you say shared facilities, do you mean like amenities?
I mean, like, uh, common.
Common parking?
Common, open space, common parking spaces, that, that sort of thing. I don't think we have to have a community kitchen if, if, if you're building all single.
I'm just trying to understand kind of your degree there, yeah.
And. You know, I, I just think that. Right now, we, the, the purd is, is based on large lot sizes. And. Uh, cottage zoning. Or cottage housing zoning uh, would allow us. To do that on much smaller parcels. And so I, I really think that cottage housing. Belongs in a purd, or we should replace the purd with cottage housing, because.
It sounds better.
Because that's, that's. I mean, that's the goal, really, to create. Communities of housing that's pretty close together. That everyone knows each other in it. So those are some like initial thoughts, anyway. And I think we could, in terms of the cottage housing, I think. Whether it, we just reduce the land size requirement in the purd and make it part of the purd, or it could be a separate thing, and maybe we could. If we had cottage housing, maybe we could do away with the purd, I, I don't know. But cottage housing is, to me, a better end. Than. You know, what's happening on Northline Road, for instance.
Uh, yeah, I agree with you that considering modifications to the purd, and then also considering cottage housing, I was starting to see them kind of blur together.
Yeah. Um. But there are other aspects to cottage housing, uh, like the, the concept that you could. Build two cottages on a property that, because you're building two smaller buildings than one larger building, so we can reduce the. We can increase the number of, of buildings that people could build on, on a lot. I'm not following you. Well, I mean, one of the things in here was you do. That's what cottage housing does. Yeah, but I mean, you have to change the zone.
So.
Oh, this is part of zoning. Yeah, I know, and I, but I'm saying that's, that's something that was attracted to me outside of her. I know, and I'm what I'm saying, that's that's something that was attracted to me outside of her.
I get the chance to go through the cottage zoning and I um I would love it if if. Jackie or Jonathan, if one of you could give us just a little synopsis of the um session that you attend.
You don't want me to say anything.
Do you want Chris to give his impressions as the professional planner here?
Sure, so the. I agree that the plan unit residential development bylaw should be tweaked in certain ways. Um. And I agree that a cottage development bylaw could be um. Could be appropriate to Great Barrington to move our housing movements and land conservation goals. The the cottage bylaw that we learned about uh on this on this webinar that some of you were were able to. To run, jump onto, and we can send the materials around if you'd like. Um, the cottage bylaw approach takes a zoning lot that. Take a conforming zoning lot in the R two zone, the one acre lot. At a twenty percent lot coverage, you could build an eighty seven hundred square feet single unit home. And the cottage bylaw says, okay, if you can build eighty seven hundred square feet at one unit there. Let's break that into smaller that don't go over eighty seven hundred square feet. We're talking about the use of land as, you know, lot coverage and, you know, that kind of thing. Let's. Make more bedrooms than just ten bedrooms in one big house, let's make five cottages with two bedrooms each. You know, as household sizes, as we've seen in the demographic reviews, household sizes are shrinking. Uh, everywhere, including in Berkshire County Northeast, why are we allowing? Um, uh, why does our zoning allow for massive houses but not smaller? And so the cottage, the the idea behind the cottage bylaw is to allow by right, in most cases. Smaller houses rather than larger houses. Uh, on larger parcels, the idea would be to combine it with a purd type of mechanism, so that you could. Uh, not only could you, but you would have to cluster these around common infrastructure. And so the cottage bylaw talks a little bit about required clustering as well.
So I'm I misread that, because so the 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 cottage bylaw then is really just is a purd.
In a way.
In a way, yes, I I read this to me.
First of all, this is a model bylaw, this is not.
Yeah, I I read the concept, I'm sorry, I I misread the concept, so it it doesn't matter, I misread it, so.
Well, you're not talking about required open spaces, just abiding by existing lot coverage, which is different.
Correct, it's going by existing lot coverage and and it's saying that um you can cover the same amount of lot, it's gotta be concentrated. And therefore you have space for common areas and open space.
Mm hmm.
On this on.
So it's not just the setbacks, the existing setbacks, but clustering.
There are some other parts of the purd that um. Uh, you know, the density allowances of the current burden may be, may not be appropriate, you know, they may be too high in some cases. Um. There's a minimum unit and a maximum unit allowance.
Ten to sixty, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so.
Yeah. Um.
Well, and it's also dealing with larger parcels, too.
Yeah, yeah, there's there's not, there's not necessarily a design requirement, a cluster requirement. There the the process, I think, tripped us up last time we were doing the Habitat Housing Site. Uh, Housing Trust, it was a preliminary plan. You know, followed by a definitive plan, followed by a special permit, followed by a subdivision, which was a very clunky, multi-step process. And, you know, were you to want to promote a certain type of project, you wouldn't want to make it go through. Four hoops, uh, each of which is discretionary, so. So lots lots of things to to think about and possibly propose to advise.
So our goal, I think, for this discussion was to think about whether or not we wanna take up cottage housing. Purd as a amendment for the May town meeting.
And it makes sense, very difficult, and it makes sense to think about in this, the the. The um how this relates to what the Affordable Housing Trust has sent.
Exactly.
To consider the mobile homes and trailers, because these are all probably. Interrelated, all of these types of housing and types of building on a lot.
Well, there are different approaches to to solving the same issue.
So that's why it kind of all. It makes sense to discuss them all, as as kind of one unit.
And to that point, I wondered what the thoughts were about. If purd or cottage housing was applied to some sort of mobile pre manufactured housing and. To the Affordable Trust Fund's point in their letter to us from back in March, like. Where do we see a distinction between tiny homes, which we've been pretty um supportive of? Already and mobile homes, so I don't know how we like mush this all together. Yeah, or braid it all up into some nice updated zoning, but do you have an opinion there, Pedro, or have you not had enough time to? Think about that?
These are questions about.
About how how and whether to integrate cottage into cottage housing principles into the purd. But also, is a cottage, could a cottage be a mobile home?
A bunch of tiny houses clustered together.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, there's a distinction between mobile tiny houses and mobile homes.
Yeah.
We've made that difference, how they're built also, so there's there are distinct.
And so.
Is there else? Little distinction in how the land ownership there?
There might be.
And I wonder if that's part of the problem with like how we think of mobile home or trailer park?
That's the problem, I think of mobile homes as trailer parks. You cannot associate.
No, I know, but that's what I think, I'm I'm addressing like the negative connotation that a lot of people have to mobile homes.
Yeah, I think that's part of the trust's letter to you is to um. Bring that issue up is maybe the reason the bylaw doesn't allow it, it's just because of the negative connotation, and maybe that's not the right way to make.
But then also, like, like recently, what's happened in the area with. And how like the residents of these are affected when they don't own the land. Or the land isn't owned, like, I mean, I could see it working with like a land trust or something, but if it's a for-profit entity. Then maybe.
Like the ownership structure at Forest Row.
Yeah, okay, now here's my non-planning board's um vision of this, because I'm envisioning what these clustered arrangements of. These smaller homes with more, I mean, this density. And I and then I'm thinking about tiny houses and I'm thinking about that notion of, you know, the mobile house. I'm I would get excited if I saw interesting developments like that around, I mean, I, but this is me and I don't know. It's it's an aesthetic thing and it's a playful thing. And there's a lot of possible ways of looking at it and thinking about it, and. If you're young and you're trying to get a family going and you or this or that or the other, or you're older and you just wanna give up everything and keep. And but be around people and enjoy the open space as well, I I think there's a lot of flexibility in this way of thinking. But I'd want to, I'd want to see what it looks like um in some of the the specific. Land that's available for development, I'd love to see somebody play with that. And show this is what, these are ways you could work with it, you could show this here. And it wouldn't turn out looking like cookie cutter little tiny houses.
Yeah, um, I think I'd like to hear from Brad, we'll get you started um at public comment, but um. I'm just curious, can, for the benefit of me, cause I don't know off the top of my head. A mobile home versus a tiny house, what are the two, the standards that they are built to?
Uh, mobile home is five hundred square feet and larger.
Mobile home is five hundred.
And a mobile tiny house is under four hundred feet or less.
Okay, so it's a it's a size issue and then.
Also a construction.
Thought, yeah, I thought it's a chassis.
It's also, you can't drive it, that's supposed to be.
But I thought both were druggable, is that not correct?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm misinformed then, so a mobile home is not on a semi-permanent. Foundation.
Well, I guess we could.
I thought that they were built on a chassis, am I wrong?
It could be.
They are, they're they're built to a higher standard than a tiny home, I don't think size is anything.
In terms of.
Yeah, zoning its size. You know, zoning.
In our zone, yeah, but.
Right, but but building code, mobile homes are built to a high HUD standard, a tiny house is built to a recreation vehicle standard, it's not a house.
Right, okay, um, and. And then, um, so tiny house, there's a mobile home, manufactured home, is that a separate definition?
That could be, it could be modular, it couldn't, it couldn't be penalized, it could be anything. Yeah, all homes are manufactured.
I believe our zoning code allows modular.
So for the record, Fred Clark.
I'm sorry, two pieces. Our zoning code allows a pre manufactured modular that comes in two pieces, but doesn't allow. A mobile home as pre manufactured one.
We're doing the same.
Uh, well, I didn't do the research, another one, so.
I don't.
So it's probably something worth looking into, I don't, I'm not sure.
Good, yeah, do you know if it has, like, any mention of a manufactured home and?
Uh, the letter doesn't, the the bylaw doesn't distinguish in whether it comes in one parts or two parts, but. The letter from the trust says, it it essentially the bylaw is making that distinction because it 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 says that. Trailer homes, mobile homes, in that sense, built to the HUD standard, are not allowed. And so in a sense, there's.
The whole house has modular homes all over the place.
Right, well, that that's, that's what the letter is pointing out, this was irony.
Sort of inconsistency of that, right?
The inconsistency.
That's totally different, isn't it? Isn't it, am I getting the idea of what a mobile home is incorrectly?
I I, a mobile home could be a a half a home or a single home.
But it very well could have wheels and a hitch.
It could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, a modular home is not, it's brought in on a truck and put on a foundation.
Mm hmm.
I don't, I don't, I was looking for definitions in our code and I wasn't finding everything that I thought made it clear, so.
But there shouldn't be, I mean, the manufactured home, right, the modular is just like any other house.
Right.
Right.
Mm hmm, that's.
It should, you know, meet the current energy code for. A right, a state built.
Exactly.
That's the manufactured, and then a mobile home, does it have building code envelope requirements?
It has HUD requirements.
HUD requirements, so not building code.
And I and I think that's the main distinction, is the is the code that they have built to, that's right.
Um.
Because very often a mobile home now is either brought in on chassis, but we, you know, taken off and put on a. You know, semi-permanent, you know, base.
The hitch is taken, if there's a hitch, it's taken off, yeah.
It it, it's not mobile in the sense of drive down the road.
I guess.
That would be an RV.
Yeah, is the thought then, we want, if we're gonna look at the. Purd or cottage that we kind of concurrently wanna look at various housing types, what are we showing pictures of here? So Jonathan has a little cottage housing development, yeah.
And. Last, may I?
Yes, Fred, please.
Um, last winter, Bill Cook uh brought a proposal for cottage houses to the Affordable Housing Trust. And used images from the Methodist campground on Markton's Vineyard. And those were picked up and published in the newspaper and. That was the one thing that we've gotten the most feedback, the most uh excitement about. Of the idea of, you know, like the like the camp house, small cottages. Close together, shared common uh space. I think it's a really dynamic idea, I like the idea of talking about um. A cottage bylaw, particularly on smaller uh parcels. Of of, you know, one to three acres or something like that, that uh. But I think it's very similar to co-housing that we did talk about um previously. Uh. Co-housing has those clustered homes, sometimes sharing a a common wall, sometimes not. Uh, but close together with parking in one area and uh shared common facilities. Basically, that's that's co-housing. Um, and I think it's a really interesting uh development.
And Randy, I just had this wild idea, it's, I'm thinking, well, how much land do we actually have to develop in Great Barrington, but if it be, this is one of those regional things. If we start doing something and people find it really interesting, our other communities might get excited about it, too.
I've talked, been talking to Claire O'Callaghan, who is the housing reporter for the Berkshire Eagle. Who's working on an article on co-housing, which should come out in a few days. So I think that it's something that really. It's another term for your cottage housing proposal, I think it's something that really uh could be a great model.
But, I'm, Sid, what?
You're confused, I'm confused, could you're referring to cottage housing and and co-housing as the same thing, they're not. They're not even close.
I mean.
Because I think.
Disagree. I think that they could be the same thing.
But it sounded like this cottage housing was using already existing zoning and talking about. Talking about lot coverage and being able to transfer like less than lot coverage to more units than the one. So like if one unit is allowed by right of ten thousand square feet, then you can build less than ten thousand square feet cottage, right, and so.
We don't have anything that's only, it's only to one.
Well, I know, so three, okay, let's.
But that was, that was just the the way that uh presentation was created. Uh, it didn't, it wasn't particularly germane to the way we think about it here.
I mean, it it's, but it is interesting and, you know, cause we've had similar kind of discussions about difference between commercial and housing. Right, so we're talking about like the size of a commercial building that you could build, but you can't build that size of housing on the same. You know, with in the same process. And so, I mean, I I think. It does have the advantage of being sort of an easier way to understand it, because it's like, okay, what's allowed on that property already? You know, this is, you know, and so it's. Like the 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 structure that could take it up, you know, it's just multiple structures in the same sort of mass.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that it sounds like we want to take up the. Planned unit residential zoning for some revisions that may. Integrate cottage, I don't, I'm sort of envisioning like a Chinese menu of housing styles that might be applied to a. Planned unit or cottage development, depending on what lot size and infrastructure is available, that's kind of like the. I think. Synthesis I'm drawing right now.
That would allow for what you're just talking about too, Fred, I mean, it's just, because I I can envision what you're saying and it's in my. View, I mean, I can't talk to so many aspects of it.
And and I guess I'd be curious, people's, and it's like first discussion, right, so you don't have to like commit to it now. Um, but do we think cottage is separate and distinct from?
I think it's separate.
You you think it's integrated into?
Isn't purd like big, you need a big lot and one of the things with cottages is.
Here, we'd like to make it scalable, depending on needs that, yeah.
And I don't think there's any reason that you couldn't apply a cottage housing to a bigger lot.
Sure. If you've got.
I think if this is well done, we could actually probably do away with the purd.
Mm hmm.
Cottage housing sounds nicer than purd, I think purd is like not a great word.
Get in line. Vote him, Jackie.
It it's certainly more understandable, so then I guess high level overarching goals would be to provide for. Increased density of potentially a variety of housing styles. Um, with preservation of open space.
Open space, yeah.
And some sort of shared.
Yeah.
Open space amenity, maybe, or something like that, is that?
But to Pedro's other point, like, is cottage housing just single family and could, like, what we?
It doesn't have to be.
Has to be.
It doesn't have to be.
We're gonna write it.
Yeah, this is, that's why I'm seeing it as sort of like a la carte menu, right? A bunch of if then statements.
But if it's defined defined as like six hundred to nine hundred square feet, then. That sense.
What is?
Isn't that what I saw?
Is that the the unit size, right? It doesn't mean.
Oh, is is that in the cottage zone, I felt.
Is that the?
No, that's that would discussion, that's not, there was.
Cottage is generally ranging from six hundred to a thousand square feet in size.
But the the model by, the model bylaw that you apparently didn't read is. It has different.
Did you send me one?
As as different.
It was in a link, I didn't get to it either, Malcolm, so.
It's different, yeah.
We're we're not making a decision this evening, we're just sort of having a discussion.
Okay, I'm just, I'm still trying to come up with a definition on cottages then.
That will have to be defined amidst tiny house, mobile home and manufactured home, in my opinion.
I mean, I think the idea of cottage using the word cottage is cottage is usually thought of as smaller house than a.
Yeah.
Although in this neck of the woods cottages are quite large.
Well, those are, those are the Berkshire cottages. These are gonna be Great Barrington cottages.
You know, Mark's Vineyard, that collection of little tiny homes.
I I would love, Fred, if you could share with us, you may have already, and maybe I should just go back through my emails, if Bill had that example from Mark's Vineyard. Did you possibly?
Did you, did you see a picture in one of those presentations, like a bunch of little. Gabled pitch roof houses that look like kind of Candyland?
Oh, that's what that looks like.
That's, that's the one that Bill sent me.
I walked through it, I know what it looks like, cool. But also that you just can walk around LA in certain old neighborhoods and you can find amazing.
All of Venice is.
It's just extraordinary, yeah. No, but it's.
No, and and I. I lived on a thirty by ninety-five lot, which is slightly above normal. And it's now worth two million dollars. You know, so.
But you don't own it anymore.
Unfortunately, yeah, cottage housing works.
This one with the city coach. Well, we can make an argument that the village is atomic is cottage housing.
Yeah, that's.
All right, so.
So.
I heard Candyland.
This, this is like sprawling already.
Can I ask one question?
Of course.
Cause in this po, in this policy pamphlet, it said something that. I guess I'm starting to understand more.
This is the, this is the cottage housing policy information.
Pamphlet put up on North. Northwest Michigan Council.
Oh, okay, this is separate.
It just says ordinances may allow up to two cottages in place of each single family home. That could be built under existing zoning in higher density areas that could be reduced to one and a half, one and three quarter. So, I mean, I'm wondering why would that. Would that app, would that apply to us if it's, if it is something that. It's really, if it is something, if it is something that is different, because it is something that is different than anything that's in the purd. And then, you know, it's, if we adopt something like that, if we're saying that we can do six units on a lot. In some.
Oh, I don't know about six units on a lot, right? I guess it depends on.
I agree, that's what it's, that's what this is suggesting, so I just thought that was kind of interesting that they.
So it sounds like we need to read, all of us, myself included, need to read, and those of you who have already read about the cottage housing, so Malcolm. Homework to do. And we can come.
You know, it'll all be governed by your lot coverage, of course.
Right.
Right.
Well, I think you're gonna do away with lots.
You mean, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think we're talking about two or three things.
In cottage, in cottage housing.
You may not have.
Some, some cottage housing units have lots and others don't. And so.
I guess.
You're trying to get people close together.
I understand.
This is interesting then, because if we, if we're allowing three on a lot now, it is basically, we have cottage housing in all single family residential neighborhoods, we already kind of have it.
Yeah. No, we don't, because no one's building it.
And there's no guarantee anyone will build it.
And there's no, and there's no common space.
What I'm saying is that the regs are in place for for leasing the single family loans, if we're doing three on a lot.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
Okay, so I'm thinking about what Ian's doing at Prospect Lake. Now, if they were actual tiny houses or they were actually cottages that were. I mean, is that a variation on what we're talking about?
Sure.
It could be, I think so, yeah. Uh.
Yeah, I don't know how he's doing it, but if it was, if if he's doing it all clustered, there's a lot of open space.
There's not a lot, not a lot of.
Well, they're all clustered up against the lake.
It's all open view.
So, um.
They're not real houses.
I'm not sure how best to proceed um in terms of kind of.
Yeah, I would suggest that we we go through both ordinances and find ways to combine them.
Yeah, I'm I'm leaning towards a combination, I'm just not sure how to like pull them together. I think we've decided we prefer to call it cottage housing over purd.
And we have to limit the size of the building, which I'm totally fine.
Um, and then, um. I think there's a question of, is it a special permit or is it the preferred alternative and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should definitely not be a special permit.
Then you should also, is it your subdivision control law, because your subdivision control law allows wide rows by right and waivers only by special. So you've got to flip that on its head as well, if you'd like to promote. Smaller developments, you also need.
That's good guidance, thank you.
Technically, when they need a road, it's just the driveway to the larger parking area.
Are we still gonna have like building code fire accessibility issues we're gonna have to contend with?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, what?
That's right, the structures have to be separated by ten feet.
Separated by ten feet, but I think there's access requirements too, aren't there, in IBC? Um.
Ask Chris, it's not really IBC, it's their government, fire chief.
It it is, I've had a couple instances where.
No, no, it's in there, there's a fire chief in determines.
So can you?
Beyond.
So.
It can.
Could you build? Could you build a fire truck access that is not part of the day-to-day?
Yes.
Access.
Absolutely. Yeah, you can just do like reinforced turf. But that, I mean, I think like life safety will be one of the issues we'll have to think about in terms of that.
So are are we thinking about mobile homes only in the context of purds or? Cottage zones?
I don't know, I don't think we've gotten that far.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're talking about.
I've been on my list of housing types that need to be considered.
Okay.
What do you think, Pedro?
I think it's a separate discussion to have with these guys.
Yeah, I I just don't want to get dodged.
Is there homework? We can give the Affordable Housing Trust fund to like. Come back to us with some recognition.
I mean, I'd like to ask the question of what they, so you wrote the letters, but I didn't read a request in the letter.
Um, well, there were, there's two requests. Uh, one basically is to uh allow. Mobile homes to serve as ADUs in the current uh system as a as an option. Maybe with some controls about uh. Skirting or whatever, I don't. Base.
Similar to tiny homes.
Uh, we believe that, you know, because. Stick-built ADUs are so expensive right now that we were looking for alternatives. We were asking the question more than anything else about. Whether a mobile home could qualify as an as an ADU. Um, second is, we feel that the four hundred uh square foot. For tiny, limit for tiny houses is arbitrary, many are being built five hundred square feet now. And we're requesting that the. Definition be changed from four hundred square feet maximum to five hundred square feet maximum. Right now, there's a gap, mobile homes start at five hundred, tiny houses go up to four hundred. Which is saying, let's let's close that gap.
It's the reason why you are not asking, or the, the trust doesn't. Uh, request that mobile homes be thought of as primary residences. So if somebody buys a a lot and they don't, they choose to live in a mobile home, and is. Is that something that should be regulated or outlawed?
I don't think that we got intuitive that that's whether we were simply looking at it as a, an option for ADUs. As a way to increase an ADU.
Would you be willing to take that question up with the with the trust?
Sure.
Sure, but I'm not sure that we're the right people to. To cover them.
In terms of.
For us that it's.
I mean, maybe we both discuss it though, I I more brains is more helpful, in my opinion.
We, we too are cognizant that uh people haven't taken up the ADU. Options, and we were simply looking for ways to. Uh, do them under the current. ADU. Um. Tiny homes qualify the same as a any other ADU and any other dwelling in them. On your current zoning visions. So we would say. Why not mobile homes? When we were here last time in March, um, Malcolm made the point that. This one thing that we ban mobile homes, we've got more paragraphs on that than almost anything else.
That's true, yeah. I I think there's a, like a perception issue to be acknowledged in terms of mobile homes, that that said, particularly when you go. South, there's lots of mobile home communities that are quite attractive and. On permanent foundations and connected to utilities, and it's a very affordable option for.
And they're double loads.
But they have porches and and pitched roofs and, you know, so.
I I think part of what we're saying is that. In the twenty years or however many years this has been there. A mobile home has changed, it's close, become closer to a modular. Home, obviously built to a different code, but um. They've become more similar.
Do you have photographs?
Do I have photographs of what?
There's.
Of mobile homes you're proposing?
I'm not proposing any mobile homes.
Jo, Jonathan, I'm I'm gonna save Fred, um, I.
No, he said, he just said, does it become more like?
They have, I agree with him, I, um.
Do you have?
I would like to see a photograph.
I am, I'm gonna take you on a field trip, you and I are gonna take a drive. Um, yeah, absolutely, we can all go, um, a number of years ago, I worked uh for a developer that. Did mobile home parks and he would buy distressed mobile home parks. And then he would upgrade the infrastructure and the people that had long-term arrangements would stay, he. Enact some rules about like maintenance of property and debris outside and things like that to try and address some of the critiques of mobile home parks, but what he was installing were. Like a higher level quality with permanent, like everything was on a slab with utilities and. They look nicer and they're, they're more expensive than just, you know, the kind of uh stereotypical. Trailer park you might think of, but they have a nice finishes inside and, um.
Like if the issue with these things is that they're eyesores, what's more of an eyesore? Like a giant McMansion or a mobile home?
It's all subjective, it's also, but we can go take, he's got one over just north of Hudson, that's the last one he was working on.
I mean, they're both a problem, Pedro, if they're not maintained, right?
Well, it's sort of like a regular house.
No, I know.
I mean, anything.
Exactly, every.
And we're not having a discussion about like a junk bylaws, so. Uh, all right. Okay, so.
That's a good point, because essentially. Mobile homes in our bylaw is like a junk.
It's true, it is treated that way, yeah, yeah, it is treated that way. Okay, so we have some research to do, we'll leave this. Maybe we'll change its name from zoning amendment to, um. Her cottage housing discussion, so that it's more focused.
Hmm.
Any thoughts on this item?
Uh, I think the um increase from four hundred to five hundred.
Is it interesting?
Should be a no matter.
Question.
I question that.
Okay.
It's not. Not a no.
Well, think about it, because because mobile tiny houses are usually built eight feet wide. And to get four hundred feet, you have to be fifty feet long. And you want to make it.
Uh, I'm. They're saying that they're.
I don't think we're deciding anything, but.
Maybe that's my homework, is to come up with some examples of.
That would be great, Fred, if you don't mind doing that, that'd be great.
That gets you guys excited.
It's a question, is a question to be answered, um. Okay.
So I will take that on.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, anything else on this item before we ask the town planner?
The sketch of zoning amendments looks like.
I don't think we're there yet on a sketch, but it sounds like we definitely want to take up some version of amending the purd cottage house, and maybe that means there's tiers in it, but. I think we, we need to.
For town meeting?
This would potentially be for town meeting in May, yes.
And then, as. Chris brought up, then. We need to look at. At this one.
Depending on what we do, we may need to concurrently propose a revision to the subdivision law, yeah, I have not looked at that in a long time. I think you guys were doing a subdivision the first like month or two I was with. The board as an associate member, but I don't know that aside from the North Plain Road subdivision, we've had any other subdivision. The one, um. It was Herbert Road subdivision, so the earliest one I can remember. Yeah, was it really? That's how much time is between subdivisions? Wow, okay.
Hmm.
We don't do a lot of subdivisions currently.
We don't have a lot of space to do subdivisions.
I think it's onerous, so people don't want to do it.
I think it just takes those spaces in the zoning bylaw, when it gets printed, it's released to paper, and you should get rid of it.
All right, that's a conversation for another day, um, all right. Town planner for.
Um, just briefly, the the Affordable Housing Trust Habitat for Humanity site uh will start. Uh, construction next week with tree clearing. Just to let the board know and we'll, we'll keep folks up to date on the website and through calls to the neighborhood, et cetera. So happy to report that that will begin very soon, and just a reminder that you're not meeting on the twenty fourth. Um, so unless you want a special meeting, our next one will be November.
And that's November fourteenth is our next meeting. Okay. We better.
There's only one in November and only.
Only one in November.
Yeah, so only. We only have two more meetings this year, huh?
Yeah. Unless we decide there's something we'd like to schedule a special meeting about, which we potentially consider, but we don't want to eat, we don't want to meet on Thanksgiving.
Or the day after.
Day after Christmas.
Um, all right, uh, board issues, concerns, Malcolm.
Let's also.
Jackie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have any.
No issues or concerns? Chairman? That's Dorothy.
I've got a shirt on there.
Excellent, Pedro?
I have none.
Nothing for me either, okay, um, any citizens? Yes, Fred.
Um. Surprised to say that I don't agree with some comments about the North Plain Road, I do agree with Chris. That the process was clunky and very difficult when the reviews and when the uh support came in. Uh. Very often, um. I. I've done my own analysis of the development making, I'm perfectly comfortable that we. Are are benefiting some families that would otherwise not. Uh, have housing. Um. We spent a long time working on that project, we developed a lot of um project guidelines. Uh, project goals that we came to, um. But we met with a lot of neighbors, met with a lot of uh other constituents, there's a lot of constituents that make a project, as most of you know. Um, this board is only one voice, one constituent. And we felt like we needed to, um. Lend something in that that meant, meant, meant project goals that we did, and we did follow um the guidance as best we could. Uh, in the um, both in the master plan and in the uh the zoning bylaw. And uh, we feel like we did a pretty good job. I will tell you that if. The project had insisted on going to thirty units. That it was seriously in danger of derailing the project completely. Um. This board's mission is to. Is to review projects, you don't develop projects, you're not out there putting your money in place, you're not out there buying the land. Um. Ultimately, you have to review what comes in front of you, and you have to trust that the. And you have to trust that the the people putting the project together. Have balanced their needs, the needs of the future owners. Um, the needs of the. Project to be viable. And for me, that that's what it is. I've done an analysis of the the seven acres, the. Um, roadway and common area. Take up one point four acres of land, the perimeter buffer. Thirty feet around it takes up another one point nine five acres. That's left with three point nine acres of buildable land. There, or if you averaged it out about eight thousand five hundred square feet per. Lot, if you would. But that's not completely accurate because of the. Dimension configuration, some lots are bigger, some lots are smaller. There's about forty foot, the 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 frontage on these individual houses. Is ranges between forty feet and seventy feet, the mean of about forty eight feet. You've got a house, you've got a driveway. There, I agree with you that the single family houses, I mean, if I put my architect hat on. I can see that the single family houses are not the ideal. But it's what Habitat said that they could sell, it's what Habitat said that they wanted. And I think that we are creating a community, we have a few, you know, a large. Comments, I didn't mean to get into this topic, really didn't. Um, but um. It's compatible with the neighborhood and there. The other thing I will tell you is, and you may know this already. Is that the Affordable Housing Trust is in the process of buying another piece of land in Husetonic. Uh, on one eighty three in Risingdale. The um. Parcel known as the Risingdale Ball Field. It's three acre lot, has four hundred and ten feet of frontage on one eighty three. And it's an area uh, where uh. Sun, one side, there's a lot of. Traditional mill houses on. Quarter acre, eighth eighth of an acre to a quarter acre lots, and on the other side, some larger houses and agriculture. So. I'm looking forward to working with this board and I hope we all learn a few things from the previous project. Because the irony is the Affordable Housing Trust is probably likely the next project to come in. To um, look at building multiple units of housing on a site. Uh, there, so I think we're 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 kinda married with each other and hopefully we can learn. I'm really excited about the the idea of the cottage zoning and that's something that we can apply. But the process has to be that we have to um, go into. The project without any preconceived notions of what we're going to build. There's what, you know, you may wanna build, this person may wanna build, Mary or Sue or Tim wanna build, but. We need to have a process there and we're gonna um, reach out to um. Uh, MHP, our our statewide support organization. And help facilitate some listening units and things like that, so um. I'm looking forward, I I know this board has a lot of technical resources. And I hope we can tap into that and um. Work earlier in the process to get on the same page and 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 find something that's works. Uh, for for the town and for the the future homeowners.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Um, Michelle, there's on the Division Street. Of talking about mobile homes. You have to understand people's impressions of mobile home parks around here. It comes, I I work in Lennox, there's one in Lennox, it's an old one. And you drive by it and the homes are packed right in. There's another one on Route twenty. Near Beaufort. So keep in mind what people have. Seen. So i- it would be a hard set cell, I'm not saying it's not doable. Getting to that is like you're talking about all different types of housing. And I'd like to think I'm pretty familiar with your conversations, I'm here a lot, but. Almost housing for dummies, you know, here's a. If this, you were talking about visualizing things, having something up on a screen saying, this is an example of. And not just a drawing, you know, taken from somewhere else. And oh, okay, that's what they're talking about or whatever. It's really hard when you're having the conversation. To try to, um, you know, envision what what you're talking about and and when you don't understand it, you get scared. And 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 that's that's a big thing. And like I said, if you showed it on the screen, uh, and that's certainly would. You know, be having. Um, another thing, uh, I thank Fred Clark for his comments. Um, and citing the Habitat project. However, I don't think we learned a lesson. We're talking about the Rising Ball Field. And again, there was a meeting at Mr. Stanton's house. And it's not what it is, it's how it's done, and I can't stress that enough. Um, here's another project. And many people didn't know about it. As a matter of fact, I was going through agendas, which I often do. Saw it on your agenda, posted it on Facebook. A lot of people didn't even know it was going to be on the agenda. I couldn't be there, I was in another meeting. Also, having board members say. I under, if the press was correct, maybe they were, that one member of the place said not in my neighborhood. And so, and that person has said it before at other meetings, because I know the person. So there was some like, oh boy, here we go again, because. You know, if everything is on upfront, oh, this is what we wanna do, this is how we want to do it. Uh, invite the neighborhood in for a conversation. Uh, you're going to get a much better outcome. You are, there are, of course, there are still going to be people that are are happy, but I think compromises can be made. And that sort of thing, everybody's not going to get everything they want, not a board, not the residents or whatever. Uh, that being said, you were talking about engagement strategy and public engagement. And this comment isn't about this board specifically. Public engagement has become one way in the town of Lee Barrington. Um, I hear it come up whenever a board or committee wants to. Have the support of a certain initiative. But when residents are. Unhappy about something or concerned about something, it doesn't go the other way. That needs to change. This board had, this board has made great strides. In inviting citizen comment and and engagement. Uh, but it has to be consistent. And so as you're launching the master plan, um, zoning initiatives, I want you to keep that in mind. But not just this board, but other boards and committees as well. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
It'll be Stanton, sixty nine Division Street. Um, I have just like a few comments, I I don't know, the uh. The trailer parking, I'm just not really fond of. Totally on the energy efficiency of these buildings, they're not built, they're built to be cheap. They're not like sustainable type building, they're ugly. Chief, I guess I would need affordable housing, but. There's better ways to do it. Um, just my own thoughts. The other thing is. As you think about your zoning bylaws and stuff, I'm put in a very strange. Kind of horrible situation with my garage and wanting to do a second story. And it would be pretty simple if just one of. The planning board and select boards came to my house, they would see that there's no place on my property to do this. So my option is to cut down the trees in the front and put in a shipping container so I can pipe out. And have my dust collection out there and it's just horrible for the neighborhood, but that's what you're leaving me. That being said. Uh, this frustr, this has been so frustrating to me, I feel the need, I see my. My fellow citizens trying to get through to the boards and. This need for I, at the last meeting that you saw me over the joint meeting. I expressed this need for a county liaison. And I would like to ask you to put that on your agenda, so I can come to you and talk to you. About how. It might be helpful for you. To have and uh. A liaison um, between the citizens and because we're 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 not feeling heard. Um, what I saw happen at the select board meeting was just. Um, it's very sad. Um, we we hear about. Being the great town, number one town in America, and it doesn't feel that way to me. I know we have a beautiful downtown. Um, it's it's great, but on the outside. It doesn't feel that way. Um. I wanna live in the greatest town in America. That's maybe a huge ask. But I hope all of you do too. And if we can. Put trust back into the system with a liaison, that would be just tremendous. So I'm asking the chair to put it on your agenda for a future meeting so we can talk about it.
Well, you should be on seven eight on Plain Road. So you're coming to these meetings, you're discussing the master plan, I tried to discuss the airport, which I believe I've avoided. Branding longer than you are, I've been alive to be suppressed, and that really saddens me. Twenty one years of a struggle involving my home that I cherish, thank you.
Anybody online? So, uh, James?
Yes, good evening, this is James, eighty four North Plain Road. Just wanna uh. Say a couple of things. One, the question about the Husatonic parking. Uh, according to the plan, it's twenty parking spaces to per unit and one handicap, no sharing to the who's a dumb, number one. Number two, uh, the question about sharing private parking lots, I would think that the owner might have liability issues, that's just my opinion. Another item, uh, Lee had obtained a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant a couple of years ago to do transportation to. Uh, the 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 trains, but that was voted down by the select board, just wanna bring that up. Uh, the train, I know that Michelle's brought it up and I've also agreed that we have to figure out their land usage. I know we said that there's requirements that they. That the train has supersedes us, but that's something needs to be done. I agree with Michelle, hundred percent. Another item was sidewalks. Um, Fred brought up the two fifty five Park Street and we spoke about North Plain. I don't remember if we had said we're gonna put sidewalks for the North Plain people to at least cross over to use the trail to get to Husatonic. Or try to get to the Old Maids Park. But I know the people who live by two fifty five Park Street made that comment during the Affordable Housing Trust meeting. They wanna ensure that at least there's some sidewalks for the residents if two fifty five gets developed. So I know that's been discussed and we should definitely put that on the the agenda for sidewalks. Um, and I just wanna also agree with Michelle that and and Mr. Stanton that it has been. Discussed throughout the town that there is some type of disconnect between the citizens and the boards. And as Mr. Stanton said, that there should be some more. Discussion and more be open communication that everybody feels involved and not just. Isolated, so I just wanted to raise that issue as well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else online?
I'd like to thank James for coming to all the meetings he comes to.
And he's a regular.
See you all the time.
Did you have more, Mr. Stanton?
I just have one quick plug. Um, we are having another meeting at my house, six ten Division Street, between one and three on November third. All are welcome, including this board. We would love to see everyone.
Practicing what you're preaching.
Okay, alright, so there's nothing else, uh, we will adjourn the meeting at eight oh four. Thank you, everybody, appreciate your participation.